Ten seconds. I'd like to call tonight some of the planning board meeting to order. Please call the roll.
Ron Lahoullier.
Here.
Paul Rabides.
Here.
Jason Berry.
Here.
Jeremy Rhodes.
Here.
Chris Horton.
Here.
David Witham.
Here.
Robert Bellmore.
Here.
Paul Goodwin. Kenneth Vincent. Doug Haberman.
Here.
This time I'd like to appoint Mr. Goodwin and Mr. Haberman as both voting members for the evening. Next item is approval of the minutes of October eighteen, twenty twenty-three. Anybody have a motion?
Mr. Chair, move to accept as presented.
Motion made by Mr. Rabides, seconded by Mr. Berry. Any discussion? All those in favor, raise your right hand. opposed or abstained? Next item is committee reports. City Council report, Mr. Witham.
I'll be very brief this evening. The zoning ordinance amendment, Chapter nineteen regarding the historic district, the historic overlay district. As you know, I've proposed legislation at the council level to reduce the size of that by an amount. There are three areas denoted on the zoning overlay map to be removed from the historic district. Quickly, sort of geographically, it bodes well to take a look at a map. You know, you can get a look at that map in the planning office if you would like to. And I may actually ask that the planning staff send that out to planning board members so they can see that. It removes the historic district from the section of property between Winter Street and the railroad tracks along that sliver of land, if you will. So the northerly side of Winter Street. Currently, there are no homes on that stretch except for, I think there's one or two at the very easterly end of that corridor. And then there's the Breton's Cleaners vacant site right now. The other area proposed for removal is on the easterly side of High Street. From approximately Pleasant Street. There's a property there with a large stacked concrete block retaining wall to like a patio. Northerly to Constitutional Way where the Bruton, I mean where the Barabee, the Barabee, the, where the law office is.
Coolidge.
Coolidge Law Office, thank you. FX is here so often, I've got used to that name. And then the other section is largely south of here. The area around Elm Street, what's known as Broad Street, which is really a grass street in that section over there. So those are like the three pods of areas slated for removal. That remains in committee with the council's Economic Development Committee. And the Economic Development Committee will have a meeting coming up jointly with the Historic District Commission to delve into that in greater detail. There'll be a report back to full council, I suspect before our December meeting and potential action at the December meeting. That's all I have for tonight, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Witham. Strata Regional Planning Commission update, Mr. Horton.
No report this evening, we are scheduled to meet Friday.
Thank you very much. Twenty thirty committee, Mr. Berry.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. All right, so I actually do have a report for change, all right? So we had our meeting on ten twenty-five, it was a really good meeting. Spent a good portion of time recapping where we were and what we covered up to that point. We did spend a significant amount of time looking at sustainability, so that particular category. And we had a whole bunch of great topics in there, specifically the solar farm, which we'll actually be taking a look at tonight, which is, which is very exciting. There was also discussion about the, the new energy committee that's going to be looking towards helping define and plan our city goals for electricity usage. Let's see, we also talked about some other topics, some, some a little bit harder than others. For example, we talked about residential growth, right? So we did have that housing workshop roughly about a month and a half, two months ago. And how the, basically the number of units is going up dramatically and what are we going to do about it, right? We also talked about the homeless population, aid, and on some other topics like inclusion and diversity. We had some really great conversation about that as well. We also spent time looking at the library and recreation category. And we had some topics brought up specifically around senior programming, right? So Council Cameron was very proud of the senior walking program and she hopes to see that grow. We also spent time talking about the Mally Farm with the boat and kayak watch and also developing trails. So these are just ideas, nothing is formal at this point. When we do have something official, we will bring it to you for review.
Thank you, Mr. Berry.
Thank you.
Plan Use Board reports, you had the summary in your packet, does anybody have any comment on them? Seeing none, we'll move on. Any old business coming before the board this evening, Director Mears?
None this evening, Mr. Chairman.
Move on to item four, new business. Item A, WDS LLC is seeking a lot line adjustment between properties located along Willand Drive. And the commercial industrial CI district assesses map forty-three, lot one J, map forty-three, lot one K, and map forty-three, lot one I, sub number zero three, twenty twenty-three. Director Mears, anything to add?
Yes, so the applicant is seeking to merge lots one dash J and one dash K to be known as lot one J. And then adjust the lot lines between the new lot one J and one dash I along the Willand Drive right away. This portion of Willand Drive is private, the existing cul-de-sac will be reconstructed as part of this plan. Staff recommends that the board set this application as complete and begin the review process.
Thank you very much. Entertainer motion to accept.
Go move.
Motion made by Mr. Rabides, seconded by Mr. Horton, discussion. All those in favor, raise your right hand. opposed? Motion carries. Mr. Stoll.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Bob Stollet, Tritic Engineering, representing the property owners this evening. Dave Franger from, from WDS is here, as well as Mike Galuso from Central Fence. This is, the proposal is pretty much as, as Director Mears outlined. What we're like, what we would like to do is the T-two in your package, you can see. Yeah, here we go. That good? Everybody can see that? From the photo on your T-two, you can see where the existing cul-de-sac is. And we're proposing to bring it back about a hundred and twenty-five feet and reconstruct it at that location. And that combined with the merger of, of these two undeveloped lots back here, gives a, a much larger developable building envelope. For suitable for a larger user than the two, the two separate lots. So the hundred and twenty-five feet is, it improves that building envelope pretty, pretty, pretty dramatically. So that's the goal there. In your package, you have, have plans on how we, we plan to reconstruct the, the cul-de-sac. Your, your sheet BLA two, boundary line adjustment two, has, has the best detail and we did a little, added a little bit of color here. The main, the main goal here is, is the elimination of this pink part. But in conjunction with that, the reconstruction takes a little bit of land swapping between the remaining land. We've got some coming from Mr. Galuso's property here. And in exchange for that, he gets a little green wedge here. And then we've just got some wings here that were part of the overall parcel that need to be part of the right of way now. And so there's, there's five little pieces, but it, it just effectuates the, the relocation of the cul-de-sac. Be happy to answer any questions.
All right, thank you. At this time, I'll open up to a public hearing. Anybody care to comment on this item? Director Mears, any correspondence concerning this application?
None this evening, Mr. Chairman.
Seeing none, close to public hearing. Questions from the board? Mr. Witham.
Yeah, this, this makes all the sense in the world, looks pretty straightforward despite the, the number of lines being drawn here. It, it looks like we're just, you know, sort of moving the cul-de-sac back, merging those two lots for a greater building envelope, as you said. Willand Drive in that section, that is a city road right now, so.
It's not, it, it's, it's contemplated it was dedicated as a city road, but it was never, never offered for acceptance at this point. So that the goal here would be to, after this reconstruction, to offer it for acceptance, but.
So it would be just that little leg, because you said from commercial drive up is, is not, right?
That is correct.
Got it?
Yep.
Okay. Understood, so it doesn't require any city council action at this point, since that, that makes this a whole lot more streamlined at the moment.
Absolutely.
I'm good with it, thanks.
Other questions in the board? Director Mears? Conditions of approval?
Yep, so plan revisions, please revise the plans to label the combined lots one J and one K as lot one J per the City of Somersworth assessor. The final plan shall bear the stamp and signature of an engineer and licensed land, land surveyor. Monumentation must happen with granite bounds. Applicant shall submit to the planning department a copy of a sign and notarized deed which will affect the conveyance of the subject property before or at the time the plot is certified by the planning department. Once the plant, plot is certified, the deed must be recorded with the plot. An escrow account in the amount set by the city's contract engineer and agreeable to the Department of Development Services will be established. A performance surety in amount agreeable to the Department of Development Services, but no less than twenty-five percent of the cost of construction. Shall be submitted and as well plans will be required.
Okay, thank you. Entertainer motion for regional impact.
Mr. Chairman, I'd move that the project has no potential for regional impact.
Motion made by Mr. Witham, seconded by Mr. Berry, discussion. All those in favor, raise your right hand. Those opposed? Motion passes.
Mr. Chairman, I did have a couple of questions on, on the conditions of approval when it's appropriate. Okay, thank, thank you. Just as, as relates to the monumentation, you've, you've got that in there prior to final approval, signing the plat. We, we are going to reconstruct that, that cul-de-sac. So typically in this scenario, we, we would, that would be part of the construction bond, the monumentation, so that we're not putting bounds in now and having them disturbed during construction. So if we could move that to, that, down, down the list a little bit, would, would be good. And the second one is C, I just hadn't seen C before. Again, logistically, that can be, can be challenging, that we, we can't do deeds until we have a recorded plan. And, and again, I just wasn't sure, I hadn't seen a condition like that before, wasn't sure if there was some specific intent behind that. It just creates, the, the degree of difficulty goes up trying to coordinate all that.
So as far as the monumentation, I'm fine if we move that down to conditions to be completed prior to the start of work. And the applicant, just as long as we get the plan set, the final plans, that's fine.
Okay, yeah.
Yeah.
That, that's what we would normally do, would get you the plan set. It gets recorded and, and then at, at their, the appropriate times, they transfer their deeds.
Okay, so we can amend that.
You good with that?
Yep, I'm good with that.
Thank you.
Entertainer motion for the lot line adjustment, Mr. Witham.
Yeah, I'd move that the request of Central Gale State LLC and WDS LLC for a lot line adjustment between properties located and shown on the boundary line adjustment plans be approved with the conditions as amended this evening.
Motion made by Mr. Witham, seconded by Mr. Rabides, discussion. All those in favor, raise your right hand. Those opposed? Motion passes.
Right, thank you.
Item B under new business, Central Fence and Deck is seeking a conditional use permit and site plan approval to construct a six thousand seven hundred and twenty square foot facility with associated infrastructure on a property located at Willand Drive in the commercial industrial CI district. Assesses map forty-three, lot one I, site number fourteen, twenty twenty-three, and CUP number zero four, twenty twenty-three. Director Mears, anything to add?
Yes, so the applicant is seeking to construct a six thousand seven hundred and twenty square foot facility for central fence and deck and infrastructure. With two product display areas and a fenced-in outdoor storage area as part of this application. The applicant is also seeking a conditional use permit for five thousand two hundred and seventy-five square feet of pavement and impervious surface. And nine thousand six hundred and forty-five square feet of grading and drainage and pervious impact to the wetland buffer. The Conservation Commission reviewed the CUP request at the nine, the September thirteenth meeting and recommended approval with conditions. There are several waivers with this application, which include vehicular circulation and parking, streets, driveways and the sidewalk waiver. A waiver to appearance standards and a waiver to site lighting.
Thank you. Entertainer motion to accept the application.
Go move, Mr. Chair.
Motion made by Mr. Rabides, seconded by Mr. Goodwin. Any discussion? All those in favor, raise your right hand. Opposed? Application is accepted. Mr. Stoll.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Bob Stollet, Tritic Engineering, representing Mike Galuso and, and Central Fence. This was in front of TRC back in, in early September and then again, early November. It, it was well received, although we did have, have comments that we were dealing with. Reece Semidall in, in November addressed the majority comments at that point. Outstanding was, we hadn't received the third party review from, from Horsley Witten. They hadn't come back yet, I, we, that did come back the end of last week. So there is an outstanding, standing letter from Horsley Witten. We've reviewed that and, and don't see any issues that can't, can't be resolved with, with that. No, no, no heavy lifting on, on that. This, we talked about this a little bit when we were here, gee, maybe this time last year, when Central Fence had a compliance issue out on Route one oh eight. And this is ultimate solution to that compliance issue out there is to, is to get him located in an area that's suitable for his, his use, that he designed for his use and can spread out with his product appropriately. So we've been working with him since, since that time to get in and get this in front of you. And again, I think, I think it's, to this point, it's been vetted, vetted very well, but be happy to go, go through some of the things we had. We did go to the Conservation Commission. This area out there is, is an area that has been in a state of flux for a number of years. It's a fairly well disturbed site. This, this new, new pavement, new building and landscaping and drainage will be, will definitely be an improvement out there. And I think Conservation Commission understood that, there were a couple of conditions that they asked that had been included on the new CUP one that's in, in your plan set this evening. So I think we're on, on the right, the right track with, with the conditional use permit. As noted, there are, there are some waivers. And a couple of them came up during the, the review process. We've got, one of them was to do with, with curbing. And we do curb, if we can get a better picture up here. We curb as we come in here on the, on this area here and we curb this area here where we have, I have landscaping. We do have some street trees here. There are four, what we had proposed is red maple that are now, we're going to switch to red oaks. But the, the thought with staff was that this, this qualified as a landscape island, therefore should be curbed. And the way we've designed our drainage, we, we want our, our drainage to come, come across here, sheet flow to a, an area here. As, and, and so the trees are set along there, so you've got about a, a twenty, twenty-five foot setback from the edge of pavement to the trees. We don't think there's really any danger of, of landscaping being damaged because there isn't curb there. Willand Drive wasn't proposed without any curbing and no curbing in place there. So we thought that that was a, a reasonable request. In addition, during the process, Police Department recommended that we, we look at a waiver for outdoor lighting so that it doesn't have to be shut off at ten o'clock. They're concerned about the homeless population out there and, and protecting the property from, from nighttime visits. So we, we did, again, we'll, we'll play that by ear to see what the, the need is, but we wanted the ability to, if, if need be, to keep the lighting on beyond the ten o'clock deadline that's typically required. So those, those two came up during the process. Ones that we had originally started with was the, the one that like seems like we do a lot is the bike, bike rack waiver. Again, given the type of use, we don't envision anybody riding up on their bike and heading off with a fence. The, the, the employees are, if there's a employee that bikes in, he's, he's going to haul his bike in, inside the shop. So we didn't, we didn't think the, the bike rack was, 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 was on point here either. The, the two that we talked about at, at SRTC a little bit was, one is the appearance standards. In your package, you've got the look of the building, it's, it's a, it's a generic industrial building. What, what staff suggested was that we, and you can see on the landscape plan, is we really played up the foundation plantings at the building to, again, try and soften that, that metal building look to it. But it is, it is an industrial building in an industrial area out there. But it, so it does, it does require a waiver to that, to that standard. And again, seems like a popular one, the sidewalk. Willand Drive doesn't have any sidewalks on it and wasn't proposed with the original project and, and aren't any sidewalks in the, in the area. So again, we'd be asking for a waiver to the sidewalks. So long list, but I don't think anything, anything that, that was that out, out of line. That being said, be happy to answer questions from the board.
All right, thank you. It's time of public hearing, any comment from the public? Any correspondence considering this item? Director Mears?
None this evening, Mr. Chairman.
Seeing none, close to public hearing, questions in the board? Mr. Witham.
Thank you. May seem unusual, but I'm actually good with all the waiver requests. I think they, they, they make sense out here. You know, the appearance standards, yes, it is a metal industrial building, but I do appreciate the foundation plantings. It's an area of Willand Drive that unless you were going to this establishment, you're probably not going to go buy it, right? It's, it's a dead end cul-de-sac.
Correct.
I think we also approved a project on the corner of Willand and Commercial, which has a bit of an industrial look to it as well. So I think it's consistent with the, the area. You know, just down the road is the machine shop that has a industrial look to it. So again, consistent with, with the area for sure. I would agree sidewalks don't make sense here, it's not going to be a heavily pedestrianed area. There are no sidewalks in Willand Drive, none proposed, so oddly enough, I'm good with that. I also appreciate the site lighting request. Typically, when, in our restrictions on that, we allow certain amount of lighting to be left on for security purposes. I, I guess that's to the discretion of the applicant what that is, but I can appreciate the, the request there. Is it mostly building mounted lighting here?
It, it is, exactly.
And again, with regard to the curbing, I think that makes sense as well. I appreciate you curbing that first drive in, in that landscape jut out on the corner, that, that would seem to make sense. What I would like to talk about though, and again, it goes back to lighting, at the end of Willand Drive, that's a, a dead end cul-de-sac. I, I would hazard a guess, when the street comes in front of council for approval, we're going to want a street light at the end of that road because of the dead end nature of it. So this might be the time and place to plug that in. I was wondering, is there not a utility pole? I was looking at the plans, right on the corner of that landscape island, is that a place where we could install a LED street lamp consistent with what we have in the city to the?
The.
Right above the I in Willand?
Yeah, right, right here.
Further down.
Further, further down, up in here. Let me, we've got another.
By putting in another pole, because that's pretty darn close to the end.
What we've got here is, is on your SP three or your SP two in your package, has a little more detail. The existing pole is, is, is right here and so.
Would the applicant be amenable to installing a Cobra Arm street light consistent with what we have in the city?
Sure, absolutely.
That would just make sense, it would light that end if you will. Other than that, I, I am good with this from my perspective, thank you.
Mr. Berry.
All right, so Council Witham stole most of my thunder. Actually, I agree with them a hundred percent. I think all the waves are very much reasonable here. Honestly, if I was designing that parking lot, I would have done the same thing. You know, that's a very shallow grade going from, from where you're trying to pull to where you're trying to move it over to the pond, so.
Absolutely.
Completely agree. I, I say no curbing there personally, I'll vote for that. As far as the lighting, I also agree with the Council Witham as far as the, having the coburneck out on the street. At least on the, on the site, I'd like to see all the lights be downlit and shielded.
Yes, that, that's.
Perfectly, you know, so.
Yes, they, they, that, that spec is there as well as the, the individual lighting is included in the package, that, that is the style that they, they are always.
Great, and I'm all set, thank you.
Mr. Rhodes.
So largely agreeing with Jason and David on this one, I think everything you've proposed there makes perfect sense. I just wanted to touch a little bit on the, the CUP aspects and what was discussed on conservation for that. Normally, we get a little twitchy about this much impervious disturbance of a buffer, but in this case, it's actually likely to make things better on this site. As Mr. Stoll mentioned, there's a ton of disturbance in the earthworks around this place. It was actually the subject of a compliance issue that came up in front of, of conservation that we forwarded on. And really, the only thing that was happening on the site with it in terms of the soil was it was washing down into a wetland. So what you're doing here with paving over it to a degree, but also directing it to the treatment base is actually likely to improve this site pretty dramatically. The other thing is, we hadn't gotten a look at the landscape plan on conservation, which we usually like to see, but I think you're doing a really good job hiding an industrial building with plantings as much as you can. So I think you're, you're dealing with some challenges that are on the site and the nature of the building and compensating for them well. I think it's a really good plan and doing a good thing for the wetlands that are nearby as well. Thanks.
Thank you.
Mr. Rabides.
The only question I had, Bob, on, for the lighting was, I know that trailer park sits out in that area. How close will that lighting bother them at all? If, you know, we got lights on that are on at two, three in the morning, that potentially we're going to have a.
Yeah, I mean, where, where, if we, if we look here.
It, it looks pretty far away. My only concern was wintertime when the trees strip, strip off.
Yep, I mean, you've got, you've got the, the power line easement that comes through, you've got a couple of structures that, this, this is quite a bit higher here behind those two buildings. Again, the, the most likely chance of any light getting through is, is down through here and it, and it's quite a distance.
Okay.
Mr. Horton.
I'll just jump on the wagon too, and I can appreciate the improvements making, you're making to the site. And I agree too with all the waivers make, are perfectly reasonable on the site here, so I got no objections, thanks.
Thank you.
Mr. Bellmore.
Yeah, so I guess I understood the lighting to just be on the building.
It, it is building except for the, the light that, that, that Council Witham.
What about the parking lot? For this time of year, when they might be working to five or six o'clock, I don't know what their hours are, when you want parking light for safeties for the trucks coming and going and whatnot.
The way it's laid out, we've got, we've got our, again, I think, your detailed plan here shows a little bit better. But we've got lighting here, here and here, and this, this is our customer parking. So your actual, you know, where you're getting out of your car and walking, is all within about twenty-five feet of your lights, which, which, which we've got the lighting plan that shows. We, we asked the lighting consultant to get a minimum of a one-foot candle on, on the parking spaces. And they've been able to, to do that with here. And again, the same in the back where we have employee parking, and we've got a light and light here that, that achieves that. So we did certainly consider that, but given the locations of the spaces, we were able to do it with building mounted lights.
Mr. Goodwin.
Just while, while we're talking about lighting, this, I think that's fine, I'm not going to make it a condition, but I would encourage them to consider temperature. That daylight blue, again, for residential butters is just a little more penetrating than a slightly warmer color temperature and you can get the same lumens. So for, you know, whatever, for functionality, you'll have the same function, it's just, it's a little less daunting to a butters. So something to consider. But the question I actually have is related to your Catch Basin one oh one, which is in the, you know, the planter island without a curb. Just a dumb question in general, I see that there's snow storage there and I think, you know, obviously, that makes a lot of. you know, obviously, that makes a lot of sense in terms of location. Is there any concern that the snow storage on top of that Catch Basin is gonna cause drainage backup during the winter?
We don't, we don't find that. Usually, the, the, again, even if you have a snowpack there, the rain is warm enough, or if you have snow melt, it's warm enough that it creates a root to the Catch Basin.
Okay.
Mr. Horton.
Yeah, just one final thought. With the existing property, I know we've had a disposal issue there in the past. I'm just kinda curious on, are we, we're not gonna have that in this property, and I guess, kinda what is the, is there a dumpster, a large dumpster available to kinda handle that waste type of...
Yeah, yeah, that was something, again, that came up during the review, review process, that he has changed at his existing location to, rather than stacking the materials, he does have two, two industrial dumpsters there, one metal, one wood, and, and we have added that to the site plan at this location as well, so we can alleviate that issue.
That's it. Any other questions on the board? This time, entertain a waiver for regional impact? A motion?
So moved.
Motion made by Mr. Bellmore, seconded by Mr. Goodwin. Discussion. All those in favor, raise your right hand. Close. Next item is waiver request. The first one would be the bike rack.
Motion to approve the waiver for the bike racks.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Bellmore, seconded by Mr. Obidas. Discussion. All those in favor, raise your right hand. Close. Next waiver would be for parking lot design standards. Anybody have a motion?
Move to grant the waiver.
Motion made by Mr. Obidas? I don't know if you wanna formally state the waiver.
We're talking about the landscape design or the other appearance standards. Applicant has proposed a flat-roofed metal building, so move to approve the appearance standards waiver as presented.
Are we voting on that, or are we voting on the vehicular circulation?
I think the appearance.
I'm confused where we're at.
Parking lot design standards mitigation for the impact of parking lots, landscape areas. Do you protect them from encroachment of vehicles by curbing landscaping, timbers, curb stops, or other acceptable means?
Yes.
Well, well said.
Motion made by Mr. Obidas.
That's very helpful.
Second?
I think I'm seconding it.
By Mr. Witham. Any discussion? All those in favor, raise your right hand. Close. Motion passes.
Mr. Chairman, for motion number three on the waiver request, the waiver from the sidewalk, I'll make the motion that we grant that waiver.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Witham, seconded by Mr. Bellmore. Discussion.
It's, it's on tape.
Mr. Goodwin.
I answered my question. We're good.
That's it. Any further questions or discussion? All those in favor, raise your right hand. Close. Motion passes. Waiver granted. Number four, appearance standards, building features and materials. Anybody have a motion?
Move that we grant the waiver from the appearance standards.
Motion made by Mr. Witham.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Rhodes. Discussion. All those in favor, raise your right hand. Close. Waiver is granted. Waiver number five, site lighting. Way of motion. Mr. Horton.
Move at the request of central fence and deck for the waiver from section 12.8C of the Site Plan Regulation to allow security lighting to remain on throughout the night. Be approved.
Motion made by Mr. Horton, seconded by Mr. Witham. Discussion. Mr. Berry.
Does that include the Cobra neck on the street?
That comes on by itself, right?
Separate line item?
Yes.
Okay, all right.
Mr. Bellmore.
Is the applicant willing to, to make a condition to, or how do we do that? Make a note as far as Mr. Goodwin's comment about the type of lighting? Is that something we put on the plan or make a condition of approval, or are you amenable? Is that the right word I want to it?
Let me just, we did submit some, some lighting specs with the original, and let me just see what...
Klein?
What's that?
Klein?
Yeah, I wish. It is.
Do you have that in your...
I did see the spec. I didn't Google it, and it didn't seem evident on, on the spec that I saw what the, what the color temperature was. Oh, perfect. Luminous, weight, potash, swaddage, available in 5,000, 4,000, and 3,000. I would recommend you stay away from 5,000 and 4,000 and go towards the 3,000 Kelvin.
And that is, that is what we've got spec'd on the plan.
Perfect.
We're good.
We're good. Okay, thank you.
Discussion. All those in favor, raise your right hand. Close. Next is the motion for conditional use permit. Is there anything to add beforehand? Director Mears.
The Conservation Commission just had the following conditions. No soil shall be removed from the site without state permission due to the invasive plantings, and a landscape plan shall be submitted and shall include trees from the approved planting list in the Site Plan Regulations.
Thank you. Entain a motion for the conditional use permit. Mr. Rhodes.
So moved with the two conditions set by conservation.
Second.
By Mr. Rhodes, seconded by Mr. Bellmore. Discussion. All those in favor, raise your right hand. Close. Conditional use permit is granted.
Thank you.
Next, we get into the site plan application request. Director Mears, get a review conditions.
Yes, plan revisions revise the stormwater management, maintenance, and inspection plan to indicate that annual report shall be submitted July 1st of each year. Please list all waivers granted on the plan set to replace the four October Glory Red Maple trees in the front landscape island with four red oaks. Any outstanding comments from third-party review completed by Horsley Witten for drainage report shall be addressed to the Satisfaction of Director of Planning and Community Development. An LED Cobra Arm streetlight shall be added to the existing utility pole. Conditions that must be met prior to final approval. The final plan shall bear the stamp and signature of an engineer-licensed land survey and landscape architect. All federal and state permits shall be received. A copy and certificate of understanding for stormwater management, maintenance, and inspection plan signed by the property owner. Conditions to be completed prior to the start of site work. Construction cost estimate for the project. Building plan shall bear the stamp of a certified protection engineer licensed in New Hampshire to certify compliance with all egress, emergency lighting, smoke, heat, and CO detection systems, fire alarm monitoring and reporting systems, fire suppression systems, and any other fire protection or related life safety systems required by National or New Hampshire Fire Code. A pre-construction meeting is required. An escrow in the amount set by the city's contract engineer and agreeable to Department of Development Services shall be established. A preferment surety in amount agreeable to the Department of Development Services, but not less than 25%. Water and sewer connection permit is required. Erosion controls shall be installed on-site prior to any start of construction. Landscaping survival surety, 10% of the total cost of landscaping or a minimum of $500. An applicant, all applicants requiring a stormwater management and erosion control plan shall submit relative pollutant accounting information to the Director of Planning and Community Development. Post-construction pollutant information must be entered at time of as built or submitted. The applicant shall obtain all applicable permits through the Department of Public Works. This shall include, but not limited to, driveway permit, utility pole license, and trench permits. This structure will require a new address assignment. Please submit a request for a new address to the city engineer. Per Section 1923E9, the building shall display the designated address number in such a manner as to be visible from the street. Conditions applicable during and after construction. For all projects approved under conditional use permit, signs shall be placed at the end of the vegetated buffer. Those signs are available in the Department of Development Services. The signs shall be installed prior to the issuance of certificate of occupancy. There shall be no wetlands degradation. A copy of the completed stormwater inspection and maintenance log shall be provided to Development Services by July 1st. All landscaping shown on the plan shall be maintained in good condition. All outdoor lighting shall be downlit and shielded, and as-built plans are required. And that's it.
Thank you. Mr. Horton.
I'd like to make a motion. I move that the request of central fence and deck for site plan approval to construct 6,720 square-foot facility with associated infrastructure on property located at Willand Drive. Assessors map 43, Lot 1I, be approved with the following conditions as stated here tonight by the Planning Department Director.
Motion made by Mr. Horton, seconded by Mr. Obidas. Discussion. Mr. Witham.
Just a note for the applicant. It surfaced at Monday night city council meeting. There seems to be a bit of addressing confusion on that stretch of road.
Okay.
The new Sports Dome was slated to be 30 Willand Drive, but 30 Willand Drive is the current homeless warming shelter, so things are askew out there. So, you may have a visit with the E911 Committee to come up with an address.
Okay, all right, we'll get, get ahead of that early.
Any further discussion? All those in favor, raise your right hand. Close. Site plan is approved.
Right, thank, thank you very much.
Thank you. Item C, Blackwater Road Solar LLC, on behalf of the City of Somersworth, is seeking to develop a 2.63 megawatt direct current, 1.99 megawatt alternating current ground-mounted solar photovoltaic array at the Somersworth Sanitary Landfill located on the property located at 17 Blackwater Road in the Agricultural A District. Assessors map 22, Lot 50, Site Number 182023. Director Mears.
Yeah, so the property is being developed with ground-mounted solar. The fenced-in ground-mounted solar will cover 7.1 acres. This did go to the Site Review Technical Committee for a courtesy review, and they've provided the following comments. Please provide a copy of the analysis of the impact of the solar arrays to neighboring residential businesses and passerbyers. To utilize a Knox box for the locking of the gate to ensure the emergency services can have access to the site, to provide information on the industry standards for emergency response for the proposed types of solar arrays to be installed, that the emergency procedures be provided for emergency situations dealing with the panel system, emergency protocol training be provided to the fire department, four shifts to build awareness of how the system works, and shut-off locations and procedures for a plan of the wiring of the panels, including a plan of final system design showing components and shut-off locations of the system, and for seed, seed mix used on the arrays to be a low-growth mix. At this time, the planning board is being asked to provide a courtesy review in regards to the proposed development and provide comments on the development. This does fall under 67454 as a governmental use of land.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name's Ryan Fahey. I'm a senior project development manager with Amoresco. I have with me Rob Bukowski of Weston Sampson. Amoresco was awarded this project in March of 2022, and we've been working alongside with the city to develop it since then. I'd like to give just a quick background of how we got here, given that it's the first time that we're here before you. So, as I mentioned, we were awarded the project in, in spring 2022. We then applied to Eversource to interconnect the project. We received their approval in December 2022, and along the way there, we were also negotiating contracts with the city, a power purchase agreement, a lease agreement, and a pilot. In June, we executed all three of those contracts with the city and began our permitting process. We worked with the city's engineer, GeoSynTech, to prepare filings for New Hampshire DES and the EPA. Those filings went in in September and October, and are still under review and awaiting feedback. As was mentioned, we were also before the SRTC at the beginning of November and received the comments that were read a minute ago.
Hey, thank you. With that, is there, are there any public comments? Any correspondents from the public on this item?
None this evening, Mr. Chairman.
Seeing none, close of public hearing. Any questions on the board? Mr. Goodwin.
Is there a landscape plan that I'm missing? No, there's no landscape plan.
I can just add a little bit more to that, so...
Just to point out, Mr. Chairman...
Rob Bukowski, Weston Sampson.
Mr. Chairman, may I interject just for a minute?
Sorry, Mr. Bellmore?
Maybe if they gave a presentation, then we could ask questions. Or am I getting it backwards? Because it'd be nice to...
Presentation over, or...
I thought you were gonna talk a little bit about the plan, where it's located, you know?
There was a big gap there.
Yeah, it's like, there'll be a ton of questions unless you tell us, you know, it's on the Superfund site.
Right.
GeoSynTech is the city engineering GATS, the Superfund site, security issues, maintenance issues, and fencing, all that. If you give an overview of the project details, please?
Yeah, so, one of the reasons Ryan mentioned approval through DES and EPA is because it is a Superfund site. So, the proposed array is shown. Is this on? Yeah, it is. So, these blocks here really represent each of the tables that hold a series of modules or solar panels. Access will be from the south here. Everything is ballasted, meaning it's above ground, so these, all these tables and racking are supported on large pre-cast concrete blocks. The idea is, we can't penetrate down into the soil cover that's on top of this landfill. The entire outline of the array will be fenced. It's, I believe it's a seven-foot-high fence, which is the minimum required per National Electric Code. So, that really will, will be the security. Once this is constructed, there's very little maintenance. They'll probably mow it a couple times a year. Amoresco has a remote operations center that monitors everything 24/7. So, if there's anything damaged, like an inverter or a series of panels, they'll be able to monitor and see that something's wrong, and then they can send their personnel out to look at everything. But it's really, you know, again, once this is constructed, a couple maintenance visits per year for mowing, and then as needed, if there are any issues with the array. Even the fence, the fence itself is, is ballasted, so there's blocks where the fence posts go in. Again, everything above grade, we can't excavate down in at all. And we've had a series of conversations with EPA, and this goes back, you know, to the procurement period when Amoresco went through it, and they were adamant that nothing penetrates down into the soil cover. One thing I will add is, on the southern end here, along the street, we did do some test pits to confirm the extent of the soil cover, and there are utility poles that are proposed to be beyond the covers. This is in native material or fill outside of the cover that's over the landfill. Even the, all the electric lines will be above ground. They'll be placing either cable trays or electric conduits, supported on blocks that usually have some kind of strut or bracket mounted to it. Everything's run, again, above ground, and then ultimately, you'll go to this equipment pad, which is located pretty much in the center of the site, and then down alongside the access road until it goes above ground in these utility poles. And ultimately, the requirements for these utility poles are dictated by the utility. So, those need to be above ground. I think that's pretty much it.
Mr. Witham.
Thank you. Appreciate the additional level of detail. I will say that I'm trying to picture where this is on the overall site, and I'm, when you talk... And when you talked about those utility poles at the very end of your comments, I'm assuming that's Blackwater Road on that edge. All right. And we have Pine Parkview Terrace that goes in. I usually think of Parkview Terrace over by the fire station. This is between what's proposed to be your site and the current National Guard readiness center. It's that access road that ultimately goes into the Little League Field there. And then just before it goes into where the Little League Field parking lot is, it turns left and goes up. I'm assuming that this fence line is sort of following that road all the way around. So we're to the westerly side of what's identified here as Parkview Terrace, closest to Blackwater Road. Am I planting this correctly on the map? And you talk about this new, I assume it's a maintenance access road that's going over the site. Is that going to be paved? Is that gravel? How do you construct that if you can't go down?
Yeah, it's gravel. So what we do is place, it's usually, not to get too technical, but it's a woven geotextile fabric over the ground. So we'll cut the vegetation as short as possible, put the geotextile fabric down, and then build the road up with gravel. So it'll be elevated above the surface of the landfill cap. And that road is put in for both construction, and then will remain in place for, you know, long-term access and O&amp;M.
And I would just flag for your attention, it's probably already on your radar screen. A new gas line was recently installed along Blackwater Road. On that side of the road, I think it's either an eight inch or 10 inch line. It's fairly robust. So yeah, I don't think it's in the area where you put the utility poles, but it's right between that edge. So just to be aware of that. Thank you for the help.
Now, these would be placed on top of the landfill?
That's correct, yes.
Okay, now, what's going to keep that from undulating? Because they tried to bu- build a ball field here in tennis courts at one time.
Yeah, so these blocks are fairly substantial, about two feet wide by eightish feet long and about a foot or a foot and a half thick. So they're substantial. We actually, I do have a detail that we show on here. Not necessarily to scale, but it will give you sort of an idea of how this looks, if anybody can see this. But it's this detail number three here. So you see, it's a sizable block that goes in. These are all precast, as I mentioned. So what they do is they put these basically braces into the center of these blocks, and they cast them in. And then the racking is built on top of that. And then they come back in, once the racking's built, and they put the modules on the top. And then the last piece is wiring everything together.
So no decomposition underneath that will affect it, like it did the baseball field and the tennis courts?
No, so, I mean, we've done, I've worked with Amoresco on probably over 30 of these. And on some of these sites, we do O&amp;M, like post-construction O&amp;M inspections. We haven't seen any substantial settlement. Most of these landfills settle more substantially at the beginning. It's sort of an exponential curve.
Mr. Bellmore?
So please accept my apologies, Mr. Goodwin, for interrupting, but I thought some level of detail before we get to questions. But in regards to the fence, can you describe chain link? Does it have slats in it? And if you don't mind, I'll reiterate Mr. Goodwin's question about any vegetation or what type of buffering or, you know, visual from the road and abutting neighbors and that sort of thing.
Sure.
Moving into the plan.
So there's no slats proposed in the fence. One of the things, as I mentioned, the foundation posts for the fence have to go in blocks. The way that we do this is the hole in the block is bigger than the actual post, so that if the block isn't perfectly level, you can still plumb the post and then grout around the void space. So if we were to put slats, or we've run into this with some requirements where, like a mini mesh fence, or in some cases even where we've done a bigger screening fence like cedar, the wind loads are substantially more because the wind's not allowed to pass through it. So those blocks get really big. So the proposal is just what's required to meet the National Electric Code, which is a seven foot high chain link fence. We aren't proposing any vegetation screening, and the main reason being we're not allowed to plant anything in the cap that would require excavation into it.
Mr. Goodwin?
Is, is this a review? Are they required to come back to the planning board and follow regular site plan review? Or are they exempt, given that this is the owned?
It's a, it falls under the governmental uses, so they just have to come in for a courtesy review.
Okay, so that is this review?
Yes.
Okay. I guess I hear you contaminated soils, dig digging equal bad. Cool, I'm good with the fence, makes sense. I personally would really like to see an attempt to soften the edges. There are residential neighborhoods near here. There's a city-owned site abutting this property that the city is looking to dispose of, either for housing or some combination of housing or recreational use. I think many people in the community perceive this as open space and walk their dog there, based on what I've heard. So I think having this go from what is ostensibly a beautiful meadow, right now, even if it is contaminated, to a very industrial feeling solar farm. I'm very good with the solar use. I think it's valuable. I think the fence makes sense. I think there's just some sort of expectation or hope that it's a little less abrupt around the edges than just a seven foot tall chain link fence with warning signs all over it in the middle of an otherwise residential area. I wonder if there's a way in which you could mound soils? I'm not, obviously, you can't plant trees because you don't obstruct your solar. So this is, we're talking like shrubs. But I'm wondering if there's a way in which you could, you know, make little hillocks periodically to plant some moderate size vegetation and to soften that edge.
I think we'd need to run that by EPA. So unfortunately, I don't have an answer right now. It's something that, you know, you'd, just from a technical standpoint, you'd have to look at the height of the mound and how deep the roots go and all that, just to ensure that nothing penetrates into the existing soil cover, so.
So it's a, have you, just out of curiosity, do you have experience doing solar on similarly contaminated sites?
Yes.
Okay, and is there a precedent for other sites having vegetation?
Not that I've been involved in, no. No, I mean, it's pretty limited. Thinking of all the projects that I've done with Amoresco, I think there was one maybe that we constructed a berm on just to try to shield it. In that case, the fence was actually put on the berm to try to shield it from view. But that one was like right in a residential neighborhood. And that, that landfill was flat. And then there was a residential neighborhood that went up in elevation, so everybody was looking right down onto that. I mean, in that case, it was sort of similar where people sort of used it for recreational uses. And the town, even if the solar array wasn't put in, they were going to put a fence around it just because people started doing things like ATV traffic and things like that that were actually damaging. So I guess the short answer is, on other Superfund sites is no, we haven't been required to do anything. And I think mainly it's because EPA has, you know, ultimate authority over it.
Sure. Is this EPA or New Hampshire DES?
So it's, this one EPA is taking the lead as the lead agency, but DES is reviewing it, both their, you know, environmental like Waste Management Group, as well as Alteration of Terrain Group.
I assume the delineation of the contamination in the cap are well understood as they are noted on the plan?
They are.
I don't want to solve it here, but I'm wondering if there's, if it maybe outside of those areas of delineation, it would be easier to maybe selectively plant some buffer?
So along Blackwater Road, we were pretty able to pretty well define where that was. On the eastern side, not so much. It wasn't as clear.
Okay. Meaning it could, you don't know where the cap ends?
Pretty much, right. We're not sure if it goes exactly to the road, within the road, or how far back. So this is a little bit different than a traditional landfill cap. This is a soil cover. So you don't have, I don't know how familiar you are with landfills, but usually there's a low impermeability layer, right? It's either clay or some kind of membrane. And there's a sand drainage layer on top, and then there's usually a vegetated, like a topsoil layer to support grass growth. This cap is different. It just has the soil layer and then topsoil.
I appreciate your responses. I still, I still would love to see some sort of effort to soften the edge, if that is feasible.
Mr. Berry?
All right, so I raised my hand for altogether different reasons, but I'm going to totally piggyback that. Okay, so the southern edge of the property along Blackwater, that's not capped. There's a steep hill that was not the landfill, I can assure you. There's nothing underneath those basketball courts. So, you know, I'm thinking for the neighbors across the street, that classic not in my backyard sort of mentality. I mean, even if it's just a small little plant or shrub that to break up the field of arrays you're going to put out there, it would be nice, okay? There's probably a good, I don't know, probably 30 feet or so that you guys can put little trees in there, right along the street line. I get it on the, on the western side, that I completely understand. That was definitely capped area. But we do know that that area that's in that little wedge here, this is all trees. It's all trees. It's all developed. So I'm not really worried about softening up that edge on the southwestern corner of your site. So it would be a nice to see if you could put something on that, on the hill on Blackwater, even if it's small, a couple, a couple of trees, break it up. Maybe they'll grow and give something to look at, I guess. Anyway, moving on to the reason I raised my hand. So the, your site plan, you spoke about the road, right? So you're going to lay down the fabric, you're going to put probably a, what, about a foot or so of gravel on top of that?
That's great, of course, no, it's like a road basement.
Got it, okay. So I know your drainage is very, very vague, and I'm sure that's done intentionally. I get it that you can't dig, you're not allowed to dig, I assume. So you can't make swales, you can't make gullies, you can't make ditches. So your intention is for the water to run along that gravel, correct?
No, we've, we've got some culverts that will direct in the low points that will direct the water from the east side of that road to the west side.
I was getting to that.
The drainage patterns won't change.
Okay, so, yeah, and I guess some of them make sense. I mean, I'm looking at your existing, at your existing grading and where you're putting your culverts. That makes perfect sense. Some of them make perfect sense. I don't know how the water runoff is during peak season, during big rain events. I'm worried about washout. So could you put riprap in there on the high end side? Small, I mean, just so that water has something to break up the speed if it gets in.
Yeah, I think that's possible. I mean, again, we can't dig into the cap, so whatever, like, everything's built, you know, on top of it. So if we were to put riprap in, I think we could surround the inlet with riprap, if that makes sense.
Yes, and small riprap, you know, like, you know, half inch riprap. Something that just gives it a little bit of grit, because I'm thinking for conservation. They're going to say that's going to, it's going to erode like crazy. I'm a little bit more nervous mainly towards the northwest corner. You have two culverts that are, that are up there. They're not really, they're not really swelling the way that some of these other ones. You know, the one that's right in the middle of the site, I get that. That one is perfectly designed. You know, the one that's a couple hundred feet up from Blackwater Road, that one's well designed. Heck, even the, even the one closest to Blackwater Road, I have no problem with those three. It's just the two at the very top. So I guess, is there anything that you can do to help guide the sheet flow that's going off the site to, to those culverts?
We'd have to look at the grading to see if we could build up some kind of level spreader or something like that. But we can't create a basin or a stormwater BMP. I mean, you mentioned the stormwater was intentionally vague. What we've done on all landfill projects before is we show, we model it sort of conservatively. This cover's a little bit different because it is a pervious cover. Most landfills have an impervious cover, so the water's going to go off the same before as it would after. So what we look at, as we look at the blocks, is added impervious, even though the total amount of rain, the total volume is the same as falling on the landfill as it was before. So the slight changes we see are when the rain hits the panels, it might change the time of concentration a little bit, but overall, it's basically the same. But we can't construct a stormwater BMP on top of the cover. So that's really the main focus of our analysis, is trying to show that the preconstruction flow patterns and discharge rates are the same as post-construction.
Right, I understand, I understand. I used to practice civil engineering, so I understand exactly what you're saying. Yeah, I'm just worried that if there is, if there is a concentration, say, you know, we always say, you know, we talk about the 100-year storm, right? You know, what's going to happen? You know, it's all hitting, it's hitting all those panels and it's collecting more, you know? Whereas otherwise, the open field is going to go over a large area. Now it's going to be concentrated, and it's going through a culvert. So not to get into the weeds, definitely going to request, please put in riprap on the high end of all those culverts at absolute minimum, please.
Mr. Bellmore?
Yeah, just a couple of informational points to further close the discussion, perhaps, or come to a near closure. Although EPA is taking a lead, DES has to, I believe, sign off on approval in the state of New Hampshire. So they work hand in glove, the regulatory agencies. Any change in drainage is going to be not our purview, it'll be EPA. We have testing wells, and they'll be very concerned about, you know, any change in flow. It's very important for the water to penetrate the soil to get to the treatment wall. So any changes are going to be, they're going to have to be run by them. And I'm very reluctant to go back to the drawing board because they're happy with the way the water flows now. It's very important for the remedy to take place. As far as along the core, the Blackwater Road corridor, we have gas vents, methane gas channels and vents. So it's very tight between the gas lines, any utility lines, and the gas vents to play around with anything in that area. So it's a site that's really dictated by EPA and DES. And any changes are going to be minimal if best. Riprap should probably be run by EPA and DES. GeoSynTech is the Superfund Engineering, and we also did a separate study. So not only is DES and EPA drilling down on the plans, our engineers, both the city and our partners, Amoresco, have paid extra money for GeoSynTech to scrub the plans and make sure it doesn't adversely affect the treatment itself. So it's a very challenging site, very regulated site, to do much of any changes that are on the table. But I appreciate the comments, and I'm sure they will look at the riprap and anything else they can do. They've been good partners from the get-go, and I guess I'd wrap it up by there. Other than to point out is, if people had a chance to look at the mappings and so forth, it's on the old section, and the basketball courts are in the landfill. They are in the landfill, and they are subject to EPA, you know, purview and DES purview. We did have baseball fields there that were dismantled and decommissioned by the city council. We had an active recreational site there way back in the day. And we had to decommission it, and because all of it is part of the landfill. There's sort of a new section and an old section. This is just the, sort of the old section, and then there's a newer section. So the hope is that at some point, if this is successful, it may develop into the newer section, if you will, for lack of some better words. So hopefully that helped a little bit in understanding the site and the parameters and the challenges involved in making changes.
Mr. Horton and Mr. Witham?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Couple of comments, feedbacks, and thoughts. You didn't really talk about the pavement. Are you going to be removing that or be, remain in place? I want to go back to Mr. Goodwin's comments about kind of the site appearance right now. You know, it's, it's, even though it's a landfill, you know, it is actually a pretty decent-looking field as it stands right now. And that's kind of really my, I support the project, but really, I think that's kind of my sticking point is I don't want this to turn into kind of an industrial-type look on that stretch of roadway where it's more field and meadows looking right now. So I'd offer that, it's kind of hard to read your plans without a lot of detail, you know, setbacks from the roads and stuff like that. I have concern about the amount of poles that are just off Blackwater Road. Not knowing the amount of setback that's offered there, I don't know if we need to like get rid of those first two, three sets of, rows of panels to offer a straight line, a consistent. pa- uh, rows of panels, to offer a, a straight line, a consistent line, uh, con- uh, parallel to Blockwa- Blackwater. Uh, the point being there is just curb appeal. I know that we recently approved a, a PV farm out at the Dunkin' Donuts on Whitehall Road. It looks good. My biggest heartburn with that one is the, is the chain-link fence. Uh, you know, just, it's just out of place for that type of area, I think. Um, uh, what else we got? I, I, I also agree, if we can do something with landscaping, just to try to, uh, screen or soften, whatever words you wanna, you wanna use, that, that area, uh, would be, um, certainly appreciated. And I just wanna kinda just point back to the RSA, we kinda glossed over it, but, uh, RSA 674:54, Section 2, reads, "Any use, construction, or development of land occurring on governmentally owned or occupied land, but which is not a government use, as defined in the first paragraph, shall be fully subject to local land use regulations." So, I mean, we can debate that paragraph, but, almost sounds to me like it is government-owned, but not being, uh, used by the government going forward, so I think this, perhaps some debate there. That's all I got right now.
Something to add?
Uh, yes, so we did, we did notify the abutters on this project by certified mail, just so everybody is aware of that. Uh, I thought abutters would come out, uh, regarding this project, but they did not. Uh, so, and, this is also, this, the power is going back for the city, correct?
That's correct.
Yeah, so, it, it is a governmental use.
Mr. Witham, and then Mr. Haben.
Thank you. Um, excuse me. Yeah, just, uh, echo Mr. Bellmore's comments about, uh, the, the site. Um, I'll point to the, the southerly side here, the, the shaded area of the old, now decommissioned basketball courts. Um, and when we decommissioned them, uh, basically what we did was unbolt the basketball post from the mounting base, we had to leave the mounting base there. Council wasn't really excited about the hut-top remaining there, we wanted to pick it up, but we can't. Can't touch it. Um, there are old benches from the old park on the site. We can go with a hacksaw and cut 'em off, but we can't pull out the concrete base. They don't want us, like, touching the ground there. The fact that EPA is amenable to them using weighted ballast, um, is vetted on other properties, so I think we're lucky to get away with that option here. Uh, it's a large tract of land that costs the city millions of dollars to monitor, and I think the view of council in moving forward with this solar array project was to get some benefit out of the property. So, that's what brings us here today, partnered with Ameresco. The difficulty with it is, is that, yes, it has the appearance of an open field or meadow, that's a good description. Uh, we are putting hundreds of solar arrays. I would note that this is Phase 1. If this works out well, the next phase is even larger, because the second section of the landfill is even bigger. Um, you can plant a couple of shrubs here and there, if you are allowed, you're not gonna hide this. It's too big. It is gonna be an industrial look, uh, on this parcel. There's, there's no getting around that. Uh, you know, we talked about, maybe a meeting or two ago, the, the, the solar trackers out on Route 108, we talked about, you know, some sort of vegetation to hide those. You're not gonna hide 'em. Uh, and, and that's the, the deal. That, this is just a large, uh, tract of solar arrays that is going to be visible from the street, uh, from abutting properties, there's no getting around that. Uh, they're required to put up the fence. I would argue, even if you didn't have the fence, it would still be, you know, maybe slightly less industrial-looking, but not much. Uh, it's gonna be corrosion-resistant, you know, steel or aluminum, which is gonna have that industrial look. Uh, the, the good news with the solar panels, as we've heard from other applicants with solar arrays, they don't glare, right? They're designed to attract the sun, uh, so they don't, it's not like a mirror-like finish, so I don't think I have to worry about that. But, they're gonna be visible, and the point that Mr. Berry made is that Blackwater Road, at least in areas of, of the site, is higher than, uh, the actual area being, uh, placed with, uh, the array. So, you're gonna be looking down in it, in some areas, and other areas it'll be at street level. But, it's gonna be complicated to hide. I appreciate the, the thoughts. Uh, it's gonna be very difficult to do that. Uh, I think we've let the applicant know that, if there's an opportunity to do that, we'd welcome it, but, uh, I'm not sure how much we can do to hide this. It's, there it is.
Mr. Haben?
I agree with a lot of that. Um, the other thing I've been looking at, uh, in detail is, uh, on page, uh, C501, the detail on the above-ground cable tray, in the details and the elevation. I don't see where it shows how high it is above the finished grade.
So, the final electrical design's underway. Um, that's really shown for illustrative purposes only, but it's a, it'll be a block, just to show that there's nothing that's excavated down into the cover. So, typically, in my experience, it's, you know, a couple feet high, something like that. I mean, the highest point of this is gonna be the top edge of the, the solar array.
Right, and, and that's what I'm looking at. It, it shows with the, uh, the soils you added were, were about two feet, but it doesn't show the height where above, where the cable tray is. And, uh, that'll be estimated three feet anyway, right? Now, length of run around the site is...
To, to be determined. I mean, there's, there's only a certain amount of bend in the conduits or the cable tray, so there'll be some that are higher than others, but in no case, I, I don't even think it'll be above the, the low end of the panels.
Yeah, and the average length of run of this entire cable tray around the site is about how long?
I don't know that. The electrical design's still underway.
Okay.
We're, we're just the civil engineers.
It's just another, just for the group, it's just another exposure, not just the panels, but they'll be exposed as well.
Mr. Rhodes and Mr. Robideson and Mr. Goodwin.
So, I know we've talked a good bit about softening the architecture here, to make it look less industrial, not quite as invasive. Counterpoint on this is a thought, uh, exercise for folks. There's a subfield that typically gets referred to as hostile architecture, or warning architecture. This is a superfund site. It's also a superfund site that, as I understand, is the only one like it in the country, in the way that it's capped, covered, and treated on the way out. I'm not sure we want to make a site where the EPA's guidance for it, "For the love of God, don't dig," attractive. People may walk their dogs through here right now, this thing's contaminated with volatile organics and heavy metals. I'm not comfortable with people walking their dogs through it, even. So, making a site like that attractive, I'm not sure it's something we want. And this is somebody who usually argues for, you know, making things look good, have more plantings, things like that. I don't want people going in here. I don't think any of us should, should look unattractive. Um, I also had a couple questions around the security and fencing on the site. You've got these two shaded areas in here, those are the old tennis courts and basketball areas?
Yeah.
Okay, so those are gonna remain paved. Um, just wanted to make sure that's what I was looking at with those there. On your fencing diagram, because of those ballasts that are going in, I know it says for illustrative purposes, um, so I'm not sure that's final, but, does this really leave a substantial gap at the bottom of the fence, down to the soil?
No, what, what they do is they run the fence fabric along the ground.
Okay.
And then they cut around the blocks, so that the fence fabric can go up around and then back down.
Makes sense. Um, wanted to make sure we didn't have a situation where the fence was more of a suggestion than an actual deterrent. Um, the other question that I had in here is, uh, you're pushing a lot of energy through those power lines that go out to Blackwater Road. I know you've said the electrical design is still under consideration, I assume this is in there as well, but, do we have any of these really high-energy cables that are at ground level outside of the fence line? Okay, so you're able to bury them or elevate them before they get out there?
That's right, yeah, they will, uh, go onto a riser pole, and then connect to ever sources.
And the riser pole's inside of the fence line? Okay, just wanted to make sure we didn't have a, a security or safety hazard there. Um, yeah, beyond that, I know we've had a lot of good ideas around putting down riprap, potentially making things different in terms of the plantings there, but, on a unique site where the EPA's guidance is "Don't dig," they're gonna wanna vet any change to this, I assume, for a substantial period of time, and, we're dealing with a superfund site, that's a money sink, that's a physical hazard here. The prospect of getting something good out of it, in the sense of megawatts of energy going into the grid from a non-polluting source, it balances the books on this site, to do something good on an area that's heavily contaminated. I couldn't be more in favor of this.
Mr. Robideson.
Um, you know, I appreciate everyone, everyone's desire to, um, try to buffer this, or shield it as best we can. On the SRTC meeting, uh, that we had with them, that discussion came up, and we discussed it at length, and, just like the arrays out on 108, you know, the more we hide, the less light gets to them, and makes them more ineffective, so to speak. I think, you know, the area where the potential, um, whatever they're gonna do with the armory site, I think that's gonna be the area that could shield, if they're putting in, you know, whatever's gonna go there, if it's gonna be business, if it's gonna be residential, that, when those get built out, that any type of shielding could be done, um, on the back of those properties to try to shield that. But, um, I agree with Mr. Rhodes. Um, I, you know, the city manager might be able to answer this, but I'm not sure, you know, when they talk about the, you know, the, how long's it gonna be before that site is ever potentially gonna be used again, and it's probably thousands of years, you know? So, um, at the end of the day, to take something, um, you know, I think all of us drive by that and sort of shake our head like it's there. Um, you know, this is the, probably the most positive thing that could ever come out of that site. Um, I, I don't know if there's a way to make it look good, but, what's the alternative? Let a site sit there for thousands of years and just do it, nothing with it? Um, so, uh, you know, I'm in favor of doing, um, you know, pretty much seeing this through in this plan, and let's hope that whatever goes into the armory site, and some of those places can shield the back of their properties, and, uh, soften this as much as we can. But, at the end of the day, I, I hate this term, but I'm gonna use it, it is what it is. And, I think it's time to do something with this, and have the city turn this real big negative into at least somewhat of a positive. And, I don't see anything other than what's, um, shown to us tonight, is, is making that happen. So, I think it's a good thing for the city.
Mr. Goodwin.
Uh, I, I just noticed, um, that, uh, Parkview Terrace, I believe, in the current condition, sort of turns onto the site, and that right-of-way, for lack of a better term, uh, is on the site, and the curb cut shown on the site plan here is actually that paved roadway. Is that staying as it is?
Uh, if I'm understanding, you, our access road is, uh, further...
Not your access road, your access road's off Blackwater Road.
Right.
There is a street that is called Parkview Terrace, right?
Yep.
And then, it goes straight, sort of off Blackwater. On the right-hand side is the armory site, in front of you is the baseball field. Um, and currently, it kind of, they take, there's a left, you can turn left.
Mr. Bellmore has a, can I add to this?
It's a, and your curb right-of-way here that connects to, or your, your access on, um, Maple Street, is the right, is the paved area way that I'm talking about.
It's a dirt road.
Again, I, I think the average Summersworth resident sees this as a cut-through public-access road, and I'm curious in what the proposed future condition is.
I think, I think he's talking about, when you go up Parkview Terrace, between the, um, I wanna say...
You look at Sheet G000.
Elderly.
You have a satellite image with your outline, you can very clearly see...
Nothing's being done to the dirt roadway, as part of this project.
That's right.
Parkview Terrace actually is a public road to, to an extent that's paved, and that, that's out the bid to be repaved, but, it doesn't entail any component of this project.
Okay, so that, for all intents and purposes, it's gonna, the condition's gonna remain, that dirt road is gonna be there, and folks are gonna be able to cut through the site in the future.
Yeah, just, a little further on that, so, it's a little odd, right? So, you got Parkview Terrace that comes in off of Blackwater Road, that's paved, uh, up until where you go into the Little League Field. It is paved a little bit to the left, and it turns to, uh, unimproved dirt roadway. Uh, when you round up by the wreck building, and then there's the Parkview Terrace apartment complex, uh, there's an old wreck building on the corner, it then returns to pavement there that goes out to Maple Street. There is a, a diagram on the map, too, uh, one of the diagrams, that shows the Parkview Terrace leg coming in off of Blackwater Road, continuing straight out to Maple Street. Uh, that is a paper road, never mind a dirt road, it exists on paper, but it, it's not real. Uh, it stops at the Little League Field parking lot, there is no straight out to Maple Street there. Uh, you would find, though, that there's a water line that goes from Maple Street to Blackwater Road, under that leg of Parkview Terrace. So, Parkview Terrace is a, sort of a nebulous street, it's, it's used heavily on the end by the fire station, uh, it's used only for the Little League access off of the section off of Blackwater Road, and in-between, as has been described, it's used occasionally as a cut-through. However, it is not plowed in the wintertime, so that cut-through stops. So, I'm not sure that helped any, but it's a quirky piece of real estate.
Got it, you, you answered the question of my quirk. So, I do wanna follow up on the, uh, conversation with, um, uh, screening. Um, and, my position on this is, uh, listen, I want this to happen, I think solar's an excellent use for the site. Understood, solar has a particular look, topography is what it is, we are going to see these panels. I'm proud that the community is going to see these panels, I think solar is something they can and should see, and ground-mounted panels like this are a more aesthetic option than other versions. My concern is that we have a seven-foot-tall hostile fence. I am rarely, if ever, an opponent for hostile architecture. The community, if I lived across from this, I would be, I would be here making comments, they're not here tonight. I'm hoping that, uh, my advocacy here is not on deaf ears. I'm certain that when this is built, people are gonna be like, "That's ugly as hell, and it's in my neighborhood." And, I don't want children playing there, I don't want people in the site, that's what the seven-foot-tall fence is for, with warning signs on it saying "High Voltage." If we wanna, you know, belt and suspenders, we could sign it with a whole bunch of superfund signage, to, superfund signage, to make it very clear that this is not a site for recreation. Frankly, that should've, could and should've been done part or now, if that was a concern. I think we have an example here, where the city is leading this effort with good intent. We have broad control over this site and what happens here, and this is the first phase of a two-phase project, and I wanna set us up for success, and set the right precedent with the community and future phases. And I think that includes being mindful about how this looks in the most minimal way. Like, no offense to you, but literally no effort has been put into the aesthetics of the site, none. This is in the middle of town, it's a residential area, people recreate here, nearby, historically they recreate here, people walk along this secondary road, because Blackwater and Maple Streets are relatively busy. Uh, there are, there's a baseball field that, for all we know, is gonna stay here indefinitely, so there are, you know, families that congregate nearby. Um, I, I personally think it's unconscionable that we are not making some effort to soften this, the appearance of this. I think the community would want us to do that, and, uh, you know, I hear you, that there are limitations, there are cost concerns, I don't wanna hold things up, I don't wanna derail this project. However, I do want feedback from EPA or whoever on the feasibility of this, and I don't think that's unreasonable, and I think it should be done as a, as the precedent center for this to be well-received by the community, so we can do a Phase 2, and provide more clean energy, and better utilize a site that is otherwise not utilizable. So, uh, with that, you.
Can, can I just offer one thing? Oh, excuse me. Um, one thing that does help that we've seen on other sites, is instead of like, the galvanized, really industrial-looking sort of silver fence, is a black vinyl-coated fence. Um, I don't know if you've seen that in any places, but the black vinyl tends to sort of fade back in, and, you know, it doesn't, it doesn't stick out as much.
But, it, this is gonna feel more like a prison yard than, than something that belongs in the center of a residential neighborhood, right? And I, again... And I, again, I'm not trying to demean anything else about this project, other than the fact that if you had literally added a berm with a revitie along the edge, on the frontage on Blackwater and on Parkview Terrace, I'd be like, sweet, build it. But the fact that that's not there and that thought hasn't been provided or vetted with EPA is what I'm liking here.
Mr. Horton.
Thank you, Mr. Goodwin. Much better at articulating my feelings as well. I support this project through and through as well. I think I kind of lean towards the same point as, you know, I don't want this to be unattractive as we drive by it every day. You know, jumping back to the riser poles, how far are those seven telephone poles off the edge of Blackwater Road? Yeah, it's hard to tell.
Well, I mean, if the plan is to scale, I just bring my scale.
And are they, is it true or not true that they're included within the fence line? So my point here really is just, you know, really need to make considerations to what this is going to look like as we drive by every day and not be a prison farm, you know? Again, I support the project. I'd just like to make sure we're taking reasonable steps to make it as attractive as possible, I guess. That's all I got.
Mr. Witham.
Thank you. I love the idea of shopping. I think the black vinyl, at least along the edges of the two roadways, those sides, make sense. I tend to agree with you. It tends to fade a bit into the background and may fade well into the black solar panels, so that will help. It doesn't, it could go away, right? But I think it helps. So I think that's a reasonable accommodation here. I would also note, and I know this isn't about trade-offs, right? But as the National Guard readiness property gets redeveloped, there is lots of much higher fencing there on the Little League Field side of that property. The fence, I believe, is 12, 14 feet high with barbed wire on the top. And I believe around the rest of the property is at least eight feet high with barbed wire on the top. Very industrial, militaristic look. That will ultimately be going away. In lieu of this, this is probably going to look better than that. So trade-offs all day. If we could screen it effectively, that's great. I think there are limitations. I think the black vinyl fencing helps. I wish there just were better ideas, but it's a pretty limiting site. Discuss that ad nauseam, so I'll leave it at that. But I do like the idea of at least the black vinyl fencing on the street sides. I think that helps. Doesn't make it perfect, but it helps.
Okay, thank you for the presentation. No further action to take at this time, right?
None this evening.
Item D, any new business coming before the board? Director Mears.
None this evening, Mr. Chairman.
Item 5, workshop business. Item A, revision of site plan review regulations, Section 13.1, assurances for completion and maintenance of improvements. Director Mears?
Yes, so you should have received my memo regarding the revision of the site plan regulations. We talked about this at last month's meeting. This is a public hearing to receive public input and approve the amendment to the site plan regulations, Section 13.1, to include performance bonds as an acceptable performance surety, consistent with the subdivision regulations, and to revise, to have the Director of Planning and Community Development as the reviewer in place of the city engineer. This is a public hearing for approval of the language as discussed at the October meeting, and I did provide the redlined version with revisions.
Very well opened a public hearing. There's no one in the chambers. Do you have any correspondence concerning the item?
None this evening, Mr. Chairman.
Questions on the board? Close the public hearing. Mr. Witham.
Yeah, I'd move that the proposed amendment to the site plan review regulations, Section 13.1, regarding assurances, be approved.
Motion may have been Mr. Witham, seconded by Mr. Robides. Discussion. All those in favor, raise your right hand. Pose. Motion passes. Communications miscellaneous. Director Mears?
I do have a couple of updates. We did submit a brownfields grant for the Prince's Garage on Monday for cleanup of that site. We also provided the meeting schedule for 2024 on your desk. And next month, staff has been working on subdivision regulation updates. So we will be sharing those with you next month.
Thank you. Mr. Witham.
Just under communications, and perhaps I should have done this under my council City of Summersworth, City Council formed a community power committee. This is a phase in ultimately joining the Community Power Coalition of New Hampshire. That committee has met a couple of times at our meeting, I believe it was last week. We wordsmithed the Joint Powers Services Agreement, which ultimately needs to get approved by council and submitted to the Community Power Coalition of New Hampshire. All of this is a stepwise process. There will be some public hearings in the coming months regarding this, ultimately to hopefully tee up joining the Community Power Coalition sometime in the spring of 2024. Outwardly to residents, it would not show anything different than what you're currently receiving. You would still get your electric power bill. The power is still supplied to your house by ever-source, it's just the power generation. If you look at your electric bill, there's the distribution and the generation portion of the bill. For ever-source customers, if this all moves forward as we predict, you are automatically enrolled in the Community Power Coalition buying power, if you will. There are about 24, 30 communities in it now, and that continues to grow. The thought process is greater buying power by a mass of a number of communities than by individual communities or individual ratepayers. So ultimately, it's conceivable that your electric bill goes down because the generation portion is less. So residents and businesses would, of ever-source power generation, would automatically be enrolled in this. You are allowed to opt out, and if you opt out, you're allowed at any point in time in the future to opt back in. I share that with you because there's a fair amount of community outreach and communication that needs to occur regarding this. The committee locally is aware of that. We have provided a number of template informations. We're looking to at least initially, maybe do some mailings, use obviously the website, community access television, things of that nature. But if board members have other ideas, we'd certainly entertain those.
Mr. Horton, you a member of the committee?
Sure.
Okay. Remind me to add you next month in the committee reports.
Duly noted.
Any other communication miscellaneous? Entertained a motion to adjourn?
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Robides, seconded by Mr. Bellmore. All those in favor, raise your right hand. Pose. Thank you very much.
Thank you.